Good evening. This Town of Adams Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, March 25th, 2020 is now in session. Just as a follow-up to last week and talking about our new normal, this seems to be our new normal for meetings, but I just did, I wanted to remind people that this meeting is being recorded. And pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting at the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into Channel 1303, thank you to Northern Berkshire Community Television, or by calling into 413-743-8300, extension 202, as posted on our website. And despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide real-time access, a record of this meeting will be posted on nbctc.org as soon as we are able. Joining us by remote participation is Select Board Member Rick Blanchard and Select Board Member John Duval. And with that, I'm going to ask if we could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I'm just going to ask for forgiveness and patience as we get through the cumbersome nature of this meeting with remote participation and such. Please note that for all votes, I will be asking for a roll call vote as we do have members on the phone, so that is new to all of us in this process, so I will be asking for that. So the first item is the approval of minutes for Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. It looks like all members of the board are able to vote on the minutes, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, okay, the March 4th, 2020 meeting minutes has been read.
Thank you, Joe. And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Jim. Is there any discussion on the minutes? I will pause to allow any of our members on the phone. Okay, hearing none, all in favor. I'll start with Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
And a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous on approving the minutes. That brings us to public comment. Deb, is there anybody on the call?
No, they would be calling in and they would be ringing.
It would be ringing.
It would be ringing.
Okay. I might just give it another moment, if that's okay. And while I do so, I know that this board had put together remote participation policy in the past. Under that policy, I believe it had stated that those who were calling in would not be able to vote, but pursuant to the governor's order, they are able to, to vote at this point. So that is a little bit of a change from our remote participation policy, but I appreciate the work that was done by board members in the past to have that in place. All right. Hearing nothing from public comment, I'll go on to new business. And under new business, the first item is a COVID-19 update, and I'm going to turn to Town Administrator Jay Green to provide us with an update as to where we are as of March 25th.
Thank you. I think the best way to take this is we have a lot of information to digest, so I'm going to kind of take this from a chronological standpoint. I think that's kind of the best way to absorb everything that's been happening. As everyone knows, this is a rapidly changing situation, and we've done our best to respond in a calm, measured, and reasonable fashion with the following goals as a town government in mind, and that is to protect the public health and safety, including our own town staff, and to provide for continuity of municipal operations so we can continue providing the public essential services that the public expects us to deliver. At this point, I know that many of us are asking, how did we get here? And here's a brief timeline of events and actions taken by the town. On March 10th, Governor Baker declared a state of emergency, giving the administration more flexibility to respond to the outbreak. The town then took steps and issued our state of emergency declaration on Friday, March 13th. This does ensure that we're able to protect the public health and safety, as well as to expedite the procurement and reimbursement for any good services and labor that we'll need to respond accordingly to this situation. On March 16th, the town shifted its emergency operations center function using a unified incident command system theory to the Northern Berkshire Regional Emergency Management Planning Committee and their command center in North Adams. This provides the town with a platform to be heard and access to resources beyond our own. So essentially, the NB-REPC is acting as our emergency operations center. Myself, Emergency Management Director Kleiner, and other public safety officials are in daily contact with the emergency operations center. On March 12th, Governor Baker issued an emergency order making modifications to the state's open meeting law to allow governments to continue to carry out essential functions during this outbreak. This emergency order essentially suspends the requirement for public access to the physical location where a public meeting is taking place, provided there are other means of access available. This includes the use of a phone conference line for members of the public, social media, or other internet streaming services, or online meeting services. Additionally, this order relieves the requirement that a quorum of members be physically present at a public meeting, and during this period, all members may participate by remote or virtual means, and you see that in place tonight. And just as a cautionary tale, this is new to all of us. I'd like to thank everyone at Northern Berkshire Community Television for responding tonight to bring us into everyone's home and living room. That's probably the most effective tool at this time, and we're going to do our best to try to figure out a well-greased streamlined process to get our other boards and commissions operating. On March 15th, closed, the governor closed bars and restaurants except for delivery and takeout. That order stands in effect as it is. However, on March 23rd, an expanded order requiring all businesses and organizations that do not provide COVID-19 essential services to close their physical workplaces and facilities to workers, customers, and the public. Restaurants, bars, and other establishments that sell food and beverage products may continue to do so, excuse me, to offer food for takeout and by delivery if they follow the social distancing protocol set forth in the Department of Public Health guidance. On-premise consumption of food or drink remains prohibited. And I'd like to take this time to remind all of our businesses here that our police department and Department of Inspection Services are operating as normal, and they are out and about, and they are watching. Massachusetts general law provides enforcement provisions for inspectional services and the police department in case any of these businesses are operating, and it's just a fair warning, please adhere to this guidance. This guidance and requirement is law, and it is for the health and public safety of everyone in our town. The Department of Public Health issued a stay-at-home advisory outlining self-isolation and physical distancing protocols. Residents are advised by the Department of Public Health to stay at home and avoid unnecessary travel and other unnecessary activities during this time period. Furthermore, residents over the age of 70 or with underlying health conditions who are considered at high risk when exposed to this virus should limit all social interactions with other people as much as possible. Also, gatherings to 10 people during the state of emergency is in effect. This includes community, civic, public, leisure, faith-based events, and any similar event or activity that brings together more than 10 persons in any confined indoor or outdoor space, so no more than 10 people at any given time in any of those types of venues. Our school district has suspended all operations. Meal programs are ongoing for pickup. On March 18th, the unemployment support came into effect. We'd like to thank Representative Barrett and Senator Hines for helping to fight for the support for our local workforce, and far more information is available on www.mass.gov for those folks who are out of work at this time. I can tell you, I did speak with Representative Barrett today, and he's working incredibly hard to address, I think perhaps not just from a municipal standpoint, but also from our constituent standpoint in terms of the far-reaching effects that this will have. In terms of town operations and offices, town departments classified as essential services and will remain operating as normal include the police department, the Department of Public Works, DPW Custodial, wastewater treatment, and the Department of Inspection Services. Today, I ordered the Department of Public Works to work on a split workforce team. One team will remain on-call, one team will be working a variety of shifts, and we have one-man-per-truck rule in place. This is in order to protect the workforce, they are essential, and I think at this point we have to accept the fact that we're just not going to get as much work done as we would like to do this time of year because of that. But if the entire workforce were to become ill, we'd have even less work done. So that's why we took those steps today, myself and Director Tober. The police department is employing physical distancing and is available as needed. Wastewater treatment, as well as also on a split workforce-on-call scenario to protect that essential workforce. And the Department of Inspection Services is continuing to review building permits and other inspectional service needs, including food service, as we go. Just call the office and make necessary appointments, and Jerry and Mark will get back to you immediately. All other town offices are operating with essential staff only, and that means one person per office Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They're available via telephone and email. The Council on Aging is open for telephone conference. Erica and her staff will make themselves available, don't hesitate to call. Our van drivers are on-call, and they are scheduling trips as needed, and I'd like to congratulate her and her staff yesterday for offering the Western Mass Food Bank operation, and in light of the physical distancing we're being asked to do, they, they did a great effort at, at trying to provide this much-needed service to our constituent base, and I know that more effort is continuing in order to access more people with that. Adams Free Library is closed at this time. What do we have pending? Speaking with Representative Barrett today, we have legislation pending to extend town meeting dates, budget provisions, elections, and other municipal functions. When that legislation passes and we get our minds around it, I'll let everybody know. And as of right now, statewide, there are 1,838 confirmed cases reported of the COVID-19. There are now presently three positive cases within our jurisdiction here in Adams. Our primary concern at this time is ensuring that all of our first responders, whether they be fire, police, or EMS, are protected if they have to respond to a medical call. And lastly, I just want to send a message on behalf of our wastewater treatment plant. Now that everyone is home and they are cleaning, please be very careful what you're depositing into the wastewater system. If there are problems with the wastewater system, that requires the staff to go into the plant area and clean out certain plumbing and fixtures of the plant and exposing them to a higher risk. It also includes having to deploy DPW staff to different cleanouts within the jurisdiction and also expose them to risk. Our goal is to keep them healthy and to keep them working. So please, we ask everyone at home who's connected to the wastewater system, please only put down into the system what is designed to go down there. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Jay, for that update. I will just add that the Town of Adams continues to be part of the Northern Berkshire Emergency Operations Center. I know that Town Administrator Green has been at the EOC on several occasions in helping to staff that. The operations center is in place to help residents with any questions that might come up. You can call, the number is 662-3614, Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They are helping to address any questions about meals, meal distribution, volunteer efforts, and other resources that people are asking about. If you prefer to email your questions in, you can do so to nbcovid, so C-O-V-I-D, at gmail.com, but just please note that you probably won't get a response until the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but it'll be sitting there. Other resources that are available and are good resources to be checking with regard to information about COVID-19 is the mass.gov website. From there, you can go to Mass Department of Public Health. There's also the CDC's website. BMC has a phone number that you can call seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That number is 855-BMC-LINK. You can also contact Mima, so private businesses can contact Mima if there's some questions, That's Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For those looking for information about unemployment, please visit mass.gov. They posted yesterday a number of resources and frequently asked questions about the unemployment process as it currently exists, and they are running virtual meetings about how to apply for unemployment and how to keep up with unemployment on a weekly basis. So I encourage you to look at that if that should apply to you. And there are other resources available for small businesses. There are grants that have been put in place by the Small Business Administration. There's an economic assistance grant that's been put in place by Berkshire United Way, and there's more grant information to come forward, and I encourage people to visit oneberkshire.com, their COVID-19 resource page, to get the information that I've just shared with you, but in particular for our small businesses in town, to find out information about the grant opportunities that are available. With that, I would open it up to questions from anybody from the board to ask anything of the town administrator or myself at this point. So I'll start with in the room, and then I will go to those on the phone after.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, could I make a few comments?
Certainly, Joe.
First of all, as a selectman, I believe our main responsibility is the public safety of our residents, and this is something now that we have to work as, as a community. Having lived in Adams my whole life, having attended fundraisers for individuals, for organizations, teams, and et cetera, the outpouring has always been great, but this is something different. We have to work as a community, and the simple things that have been asked of us, such as distancing, your personal distancing of at least six feet, washing your hands numerous times, not touching your face, particularly your nose and eye area, are something that will make such a big difference. And as I've been going about my way in town and going into stores for necessity, I've seen that the people are beginning to do this, some, not as much, but most I've seen have. So what I'm saying to this community is it's no time for us to panic. It's time for us to just do the basics. They're very simple, but the, the simple things that we can do will make a major difference in this COVID virus epidemic. And lastly, I'd like to say, one of my concerns, and I emailed Jay, is our small businesses. The stimulus package, which is going to be signed, I believe, tonight, should it go through the, in the federal government, is going to be massive, and my suggestion is that we assign one of our town planners, whoever our town administrator feels would be the proper person, to stay abreast of this because it's going to be ever-changing, and it's going to come fast. And if we can get into the fold early, it'd be well to our advantage. I know in the federal stimulus program, there's going to be money put in for local government, local municipalities, so anything we can do for our businesses, our community itself, and our community members, it's all important. This is the time that we become a community and work together, and that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you very much, Joe. Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say, please support your local businesses. You know, everybody has, from time to time, they've gone out for fundraisers, gone to local businesses, asked them to donate to them. Now's the time for us to donate to them because they're going to be hurting. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Rick, anything you wanted to ask or add to the conversation?
Oh, no, there's none.
Okay. John?
I just have a couple of questions in regards to the board's business, which are in no way compared to the, what we're dealing with with the virus, but just, just curious about the, the first one is the, I assume we've got it on hold, is the search for an employee search, like a search of targets? I know there's still time for that, so I assume that's been put on hold?
Applications are still accepted until March 27th, so once that date closes, we can decide if we want to reopen it for applications or whether we want to move forward. The balance of the work can probably be done, be done if we choose, if we decide we have a decent pool, we can continue to move forward with the search committee because those functions can be done remotely. It'll be at that point where the work will have to stop until we can probably figure out another way beyond that. Some of the other issues that we have is our 40U, 40R, our zoning work. We have to find a way to be able to have our zoning public hearing for the commercial street rezoning. We have to start looking at that to figure out a way to how to be able to do that. As town administrator, I think I'd like my goal to be, as soon as some of these restrictions become relaxed and we're through this, and public health officials say that we can begin to resume normalcy, if we can ever go back to normalcy, is to be in a position to take advantage of that, not unlike what Joe mentioned about being ready to take advantage of the stimulus package, but also to be ready to move ahead. But it's a dynamic, day-by-day process.
Okay, and the other question is the budget. We've already passed the charter, it's 90 days. The town administrator provides a budget to the Board of Selectmen, and we're very, we're getting very close, based on the charter, that the board would be wrapping up its workshops within the next week or two, and then the board's budget would be passed on to the finance committee. And I understand we can delay things, so I just want, Jay, what are your thoughts on how we're going to get through that process?
So thanks to Town Account Mary Beverley, who has a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge, we have a budget prepared to present to the selectmen. The, when I spoke with Representative Barrett today, my questions were what legislation is pending, what actions will Boston take to be able to toll those provisions that all 351 cities and towns here in Massachusetts have in terms of when to have a town meeting, when to pass a municipal budget, et cetera. It's my understanding that that legislation has passed the House, it is currently in the Senate, and we're waiting for that to be voted upon. Once we know what the legislation says, we'll be able to guide ourselves accordingly. We anticipate that all of those dates will be told, and we'll probably have anywhere from a 30 to 60-day extension on any of those dates. But it is our goal here in town staff to be ready to go as soon as we possibly can. But there's no doubt, there's no doubt, John, that there will be delays. We also believe there'll be a provision in the legislation to be able, if we're not able to pass a budget by July 1st at the change of the historic, historic fiscal year, there will be provisions in the legislation to continue operating with the holdover amounts as allocated in the previous fiscal year budget. That's my understanding of some of those tenants in that legislation.
Anything else, John?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Hearing nothing else on COVID-19, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ratifications. The first ratification is for wastewater treatment plant assistant mechanic slash operator two. In our packets, there is a letter addressed to the board. Dear Chairman Hoyt, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the board's ratification as provided in Section 10 of the Town Charter, Todd B.
Searrit.
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 You're saying Searrit?
Yep.
Okay. Searrit has been appointed to the position of assistant mechanic slash operator two for the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Searrit has extensive experience and knowledge of electrical, plumbing, and hydraulics, as well as leadership skills that have made him the best qualified candidate for the assistant mechanic slash operator two position at the wastewater treatment plant. He will be acquiring all necessary licenses and will begin this position effective, the letter says March 23rd, but I think it's March 30th, which would be next Monday, next week.
It's really floating at this point.
It's food. At the wastewater, D12A, step one rate of $18.64 per hour upon successful completion of all hiring requirements. Respectfully submitted, JR Greentown Administrator. Jay, did you want to add anything to it? I know that the date's kind of floating.
The date is floating. We attempted to do this prior to COVID-19 knocking on our doorstep. As everyone knows, the wastewater treatment plant has to operate with a mandated staff of seven by DEP. This was normal attrition where the position was, was vacated, so we were doing our best to try to find the most qualified person for it. So Todd is still interested in working at the plant, and Mary and her staff on our kind of ad hoc HR department doing their best to try to get him through the process. Our insurance requirements are everyone needs a physical before they start, so as soon as you start to get into the medical field right now, and we really don't want to ask him to go to a medical profession office, so we, we just have to dance and try to get this through. But I know it's important to Superintendent Rumbold and Director Tober to try to get the staff back up, particularly in light of the fact that that is an essential function, and those are critical licensed positions that we need.
Anyone on the phone? I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we ratify Todd B. Searrit as assistant mechanic operator two, positioned at the wastewater treatment plant. It's, it's a D1, D12A, step one rate of $18.64 per hour.
Okay, motion by Jim.
Could I just add, if you could amend your motion to say when he has the proper physical?
Yeah. Pending his proper physical.
When all qualifications are met.
Yeah, when all qualifications are met.
Right, when all qualifications are met.
Okay, thank you for the amendment. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, all in favor. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. The next ratification is for the adult services librarian, again in your packet. The letter states, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the board's ratification as provided in Section 10 of the Town Charter. Eleanor Gurlock?
Gurlock.
Gurlock?
Gurlock.
Gurlock has been appointed to the position of adult services librarian for the Adams Free Library. Ms. Gurlock, okay, has extensive knowledge and four years of public library experience, as well as a familiarity of policies, procedures, and methods, which makes her the best qualified candidate for the adult services librarian position at the Adams Free Library. Her intention to reach a career in public librarianship has been expressed, including her values that make her a desirable candidate to fill this position. She will begin in this position effective, to be determined.
To be determined.
At the grade seven, step one rate of $19.74 per hour upon successful completion of all hiring requirements. Respectfully submitted, JR Greentown Administrator. And I believe that this is going to be a to-be-determined until the library essentially is open.
Library reopens, correct.
Okay.
If we, just a little background to that in terms of our library. We had done our best to try to be in solidarity with North Adams and other, other public libraries to really continue those services, particularly with everybody sheltered. We felt our library is, is a great resource. Last Friday, however, the Massachusetts Library Association had provided guidance to all of our libraries that perhaps it wasn't smart to lend materials out and have them come back. So again, as we're all learning in this crisis, we had to adapt. to adapt. So that's why we retracted that. And then, once the governor issued this week further restrictions, we decided it was best just to close the library this time.
So just a question, should this, her appointment be ratified? She will not be starting as a town employee until the library opens?
Correct.
And does, does she realize that?
I believe she does.
Okay. And another question, reading her, her resume here, very, very, very good, actually. I was just wondering, now, we have to have the library up with a certain amount of people so that we can get grants? Is this a necessary part of that?
It is.
Okay.
This is essentially the number two position in the library.
Right, right. Okay.
And, and so far, in this year's budget, we've been able to maintain that staffing level.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we ratify Eleanor Gurlak for Adams Free Library, uh, March, start, effective March 23rd, but God knows, he knows now, whenever the library reopens at the grade seven, step one rate of 19.74 per hour upon successful completion of all hiring requirements.
Okay. I have a motion by Jim.
I'll second it.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none. All in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christine is a yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. That'll bring us to the acceptance of quitclaim deed and approval of real property donation agreement. As the board is familiar, we did, I think at our last meeting, we voted to move this to conservation and asked legal counsel to review the document and to come back to the board. So I'm going to turn things over to legal counsel to provide us with an update and an overview, and appreciate your attendance.
No problem. Glad to be here.
Okay.
So the, the deed, I, I don't, I don't mean to be very dry about this. I'll, I'll cut to the chase and be as quick as possible, but just in follow-up, and I think we all know that the deed from, comes from the New England Power Company, National Grid, made its presentation. The property had been purchased by New England Power Company from the Zimba family, and the New England Power Company is interested in donating this property to the town, as you heard, for strictly conservation purposes and only conservation purposes. It can't be used for agricultural purposes or for any other commercial purpose or residential purpose. It is to be used strictly for conservation purposes. And to that end, the deed contains a couple of things, one of which is an easement, which permits New England Power Company, National Grid, to come in there and maintain the property. As you heard, National Grid needs to ensure that the, that the wildlife that grows there is appropriate, that there's, there's nothing that is going to kill everything else off, so to speak. So there's obligations put on National Grid to maintain the property. And in accordance with mass law, in order to have the town accept this property, there's a provision, one of the ways of doing it, which is what's being done here, is to have our Conservation Commission accept it, and of course, hold it for strictly conservation purposes. So I looked over the deed, I looked over the chain of title going into it. It appears to be appropriate. There doesn't appear to be any liens against the property, so we're not buying, we're not buying, but we're not receiving something for which we have any, you know, liabilities by way of, you know, creditors or anything like that, of past owners of the property. And the donation agreement is basically saying what I've told you about before, with respect to what's obligated on the part of the town to maintain the property as a conservation property, in working in conjunction with National Grid to maintain its status. As, as you heard from National Grid, I mean, that is part, that is part of their, their agreement with DEP as far as what they have to do down there with the Zillanite Station. So that's basically what I can give you about that.
Questions for town council? I'll start with those in the room.
I was just wondering, perhaps through a town administrator, do we have a, an okay by the Conservation Commission? Did they vote on this?
No, they have to wait, vote on these materials.
Okay, on these materials, okay.
However, there was an under, they're accept, they're expecting the materials.
Okay.
Jim, anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Rick, do you have any questions for legal counsel?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Okay. So if there are no questions, and there's no action to be taken by the board, because we already did that at our last meeting, I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of a pilot agreement for Grove Street solar installation. And am I turning it over to Jay or to Ed?
I'll start. I'll give the background, and Ed can fill in if need be.
Thank you.
So pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. We have a proposed solar installation that will be installed in the Grove Street area. All of that work has already been permitted going on. This is one of those essentially cutouts, if you will, in the tax code, that essentially this type of installation does not pay personal property or real estate taxes. So therefore, in order for a municipality to obtain that, we have to enter into a pilot agreement. That is what is in, in front of you. It's a standard pilot agreement. I can let town council comment on some of the legal nuances if need be. However, I think the most important piece for everybody here in the room and on the phone would be Exhibit B, all the way at the end of the, the proposed pilot itself. And this proposed pilot is a grand total annually of $58,650. And that is based on an agreement to pay $11,500 per megawatt direct current, based on the expected capacity of the facility. The facility is not yet up and running. I confirmed that today with the, the developer. It's in the design phase, but they would like to have all the, the legal nuances done. And this is finally in the pipeline, and we'd like to get it through. I've asked town council to review it, and we had a couple of questions for the developer, a couple of, of back-and-forths between Ed and I as lawyers, trying to figure out how to read some language, and the developer's attorney helped straighten us out today on a, on a couple of things. So I'll turn it over to, to town council for any comments.
I'd like to just talk a little bit about pilot agreements, and Jay, I think, explained it really well. But, you know, a lot of times when, when you sign these kind of things, you wonder whether you're getting the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak, because they're not paying the equivalent of property taxes because they're exempt from paying personal property taxes by reason of, as Jay explained, the tax code. So understanding that they are utilizing town services, you know, like our roads and, and whatever utilities are provided through the town, agreements like this, like pilot agreements, are done to try to vest, meet, you know, what could be a very losing venture for the town. So when, when the town goes into this sort of thing, and this is something Jay and I have talked about, you know, when we came up, when this came up, is have we done our, our, on our end, our due diligence with respect to calculating what is best for us and trying to negotiate with somebody who really doesn't have to give us a dime, to be honest with you. So, you know, Jay, Jay and I met with the assessor, and they, they've, you know, talked about this as, in terms of getting what is, you know, the, the most they can get out of these circumstances. And I, I think they've done a really good job in terms of doing that because there's really not much you can do. You don't really have much leverage when you're in the, the position that the town has in this. So I, you know, I, it's something that is, seems to me something that should be signed by the town. I noticed, you know, in some of the past documents and in view of what happened later this afternoon with respect to when the start date was going to be on the payments, we may have to change some typos in the agreement with respect to dates and whatnot. But before you sign it, we'll, we'll get that all cleared up for you.
Questions for town council?
Yeah, just one quick question to town council. You said toward the end that they don't have an obligation at all to pay anything to the town?
They don't. If they're, if they're a tax exempt, and they are under our tax code, this type of solar generating facility is tax exempt. So they, they don't have to pay
Okay.
Taxes. And they, you know, largely, I've not heard of one that hasn't, work out pilot agreements.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
I have nothing.
Rick, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
John?
No, I do not.
Oh. John?
Uh, yes, just have a question. I do support this, but I just, I think I heard that all the permits have been approved. This has gone through the zoning board, and the public's had an opportunity to give their input.
It's my understanding this was in the works well before I showed up last year.
Yeah. They went through the, they went through the Conservation Commission too, John, because I was there when he made his presentation, his lawyer did anyways. So I know they've gone through that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I also know, John, too, that the building inspector has been in touch with the firm as well, going over some site plan work.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we do need to take a vote on this, this evening, realizing that there may be a couple of tweaks to the language.
I can tell you exactly what the tweaks are in terms of dates. If you look at, it would be page two, section one, payment in lieu of personal property taxes. That language would just change to beginning January 1, 2021, first quarterly payment date being March 31, 2021.
It's also fiscal year 2021, too, Jay.
Thank you, Ed.
And the end date is going to be 2041.
Correct. Those would be the only changes. And the vote specifically, unless town council says otherwise, would be to authorize the town administrator to sign this on behalf of the town.
Okay.
So it's a 20-year contract, basically?
20 years.
Okay.
20 years of $58,650.
So I'm looking for a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign a pilot agreement for the Grove Street solar installation on behalf of the town. So.
I make a motion that town administrator signs the pilot commission, or contract for the Grove Street, what is it?
Solar installation.
Solar installation for the town. Town administrator being Jay Green. God knows there's no other.
I have a, a motion by Jim.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a second by Joe. Is there discussion by anyone in the room?
Just one thing. I know that they frown upon adding more solar panels once they've put the amount in. It can be done, so if, per se, he goes through the permitting process and adds more solar capacity, I'd like to have us take a look at the pilot program, if that's the case. But the state frowns on doing that. They want it one-time set up, and that's it.
It would, it would increase by per megawatt DC. So let's say they added by five, that would be an additional 11,500 per megawatt.
Okay, so that's how the formula went, by megawatts?
Megawatts. And it changes all the time. Older ones, as I learned, I think we've signed one or two previously, they measured on AC alternating current.
Right.
The trend now at municipalities is to measure on DC because the capacity of the, of the plant is more under DC than it is under AC, but the price per watt is actually less. So in the negotiations, we agreed on DC, but a lesser amount than what we had initially wanted.
I just have one question.
Jim?
Uh, once, once it's up and operating, is he in charge of maintaining the area, you know, weeds and?
In speaking with the building inspector, it's my understanding that there's a, there's an independent operator that handles that.
Okay.
It's not the property owner who's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, the group is out of Maine, I know. Yeah.
Sunray Solar.
Yeah.
Rick, do you have any questions?
I do, I do not.
John?
Yes, I just have one. This is a 20-year agreement?
Correct.
So after the 20 years, and I'm just going back to the East Road solar installation, when we went through that, after 20 years in the agreement, let's say, for example, the agreement ends, does the, do the solar panels, are they removed from that, from the, from the, from the land?
I don't, I don't have that information without looking at.
That'd be something, we'd have to look at the, the special, any permits the zoning board would have issued, because commonly what they do is at the, at the end of the lifespan of something like this, there'll, there'll be, a lot of times, insurance policies or bonds put up to assure that the structures are taken down. Language, language is in, is usually in the permits. I haven't seen it myself, but I've seen them in a lot of others.
Okay. Yeah, I believe that's what they, they stated back on the East Road project, not positive, but, but thank you for the response.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, I do have a first, yeah, I have a motion and a second. So hearing none, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christine is a yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on to department reports. Jay, do you have anything to add?
Just a, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just add a little bit. I'd like to thank the town staff, every department, every office, our police department, DPW Wastewater, they've really pulled together in what is unprecedented times. For those of you may know, I do have some emergency and public safety, emergency management background, and I have to say frankly, this is new for all of us. This isn't anything that any of us, I think, have ever dealt with in any of our, our lifetimes. So I'd like to thank the staff for doing that. I also want to let our folks at home know that there's a tremendous amount of collaboration with our Northern Berkshire communities. I've said this now on at least, I think, two other public occasions, where the town of Adams is not alone. I speak with Mayor Bernard every day, Town Administrator St. John from Cheshire, and I speak frequently. We are all trying to align our response, our planning, everything that we do together, so we do this in, in one shot. And I also like to thank Representative Barrett. He has really been an advocate as we've evolved to try to figure out how we manage this crisis. There was a, a conversation about doing this centrally located out of Central County in the county seat, Pittsfield, versus having three regional facilities. And thanks to his leadership, Mayor Bernard, we're able to continue to have ours in Northern Berkshire. And I think that's important for our constituents to know at home, that that is a tremendous resource, and that our voices are being heard, both at the state level in Boston, and both in Washington DC through FEMA, because of the efforts of frankly, a lot of volunteers who are manning this command center. So I think that's, if there's one thing that we can find comfort in, is knowing that we're not alone. We're a part of a much larger community than just us alone in, in Adams. And I'd also like to thank all of our constituents at home, those that pass through our community, and those that reside here, work here, and play here. Please stay home. Please abide by the public information. It sounds very strange to have to say that, to stay home. But this is a crisis that is rapidly growing. There are now 71 confirmed cases in Berkshire County. This morning, when I came into work, we had one. By the afternoon, we had two. And by this evening, as I checked the last numbers before coming down into this chamber, we're up to three. So that goes to show you, as we ramp up our testing, it's going to be natural that we're going to find more positives. But it is here, it's on our doorstep, and I just implore upon everyone to please limit your travel, physically distance yourself, as difficult as, as that is, and we will get through this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the town administrator, from anyone in the room?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Jay and Christine for the work they've been doing to keep everyone abreast of this virus outbreak. Another thing people should realize with this COVID-19 virus, you can be a carrier and you don't even know you have it. So this makes it much, much different than the regular virus. So people have to realize they could be a carrier, and they should live their life and they should live their life believing they might be. So as Jay mentioned, if you can stay home, except for going out for the necessities of your life, I think it'd be the right thing to do. And while this is going on, the brightest minds in this country and in the world are working around the clock to try to find some type of medicine or vaccine that will help alleviate this problem. As Jay just mentioned, which is a good point, once there's more testing kits available, which they are coming out more rapidly, there's going to be a lot more cases brought to the forefront. So once again, I'd like to thank them for keeping the town folks abreast. And everybody just do their job and I believe we'll get through this. And it will be a while.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything for Jay?
Yeah, I agree with what Joe said. Jay and Christine are doing an excellent job keeping us abreast of what's going on. I had the honor yesterday of helping with the council and agents serving the lunches to the people, the food bank. And I gotta take, give Christine, Christine, yeah. Erica and Barb Pro, Erica Gergenti and Barb Prober hide that way because it was tremendous. It was a well-oiled machine. Things went like clockwork. I couldn't believe how you could get 30 people in a group, assign them to a job that they've never done, and get things just done so fast and efficiently. It was just a great job and a great outpouring of our community. You know, and I did watch a thing that the chief Tarsus sent out today, a webinar on the COVID-19. And there was a few things that kind of shocked me. Sneezing. You sneeze, the spray stays in the air for over an hour. A small drop, the big, large droplets drop to the ground, but the small droplets hang out there. So please, when you sneeze, sneeze into your arm, don't let it go anywhere else. And the other thing that was mentioned is millennials. Because millennials are carriers of the COVID. They don't realize it, they don't know they have it. So, you know, staying home is very important.
I'll give you this information, Jim, because you brought it up. Of the 1,838 confirmed cases in the Commonwealth, of those numbers, the age groups who have tested positive, there are 41 under the age of 19. There are 326 between the ages of 20 and 29. There are 322 between the ages of 30 and 39. There are 313 between the ages of 40 and 49. There are 330 between the ages of 50 and 59. 249 between the ages of 60 and 69. And 255 over the age of 70. This is affecting every demographic. And of the deaths so far, there, as of today, there were four deaths reported for a total of 15 Commonwealth-wide. Two males in their 80s, one male in the 70s, one female in her 70s as well. There's been a total of more than 6,000 additional individuals as of today tested for a grand total of 19,794 residents of Massachusetts tested. And we're just at the beginning of this.
That's sobering information.
Certainly is. Other than that, I haven't had any meetings or anything because COVID-19's put everything to rest.
We'll get there, we'll get there. We're still on the town administrator report. Rick, did you have any questions or anything for Jay?
I do not.
Okay. John, do you have anything for the town administrator?
Uh, well said. I do have a question, Jay, in regards, in regards to real estate taxes. Now, usually it's all made first, I believe, that they're due. And also with the excise taxes, how will people be able to pay, other than mailing them in, which is probably the best way? Usually a lot of people show up at town hall, pay their taxes in person. So how is, how are we going to handle that situation?
First step, if anyone has any questions, call Kelly, the treasurer, or Ashley, the financial assistant, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Somebody will be in the office to answer. Two, they are still taking things by mail. Three, there's a drop box for those who still want to deliver it right in front of the front door on Park Street at Town Hall. That's monitored by Kelly and Ashley. They empty that regularly. Please don't put anything in there from from 1:00 on because it'll be there overnight. But please make sure that you utilize that that drop box if you'd like. And also, we have our online provisions as well. If people would like to take the opportunity to do that, Kelly can tell you exactly what the services are and we have waived any online transaction fees in order to do that. The last piece to that is we're still trying to digest, absorb, and implement these changes that are being passed, thankfully, reactively and proactively by the State House. There might be some extensions on those figures. But things are happening so fast, I just can't tell you tonight exactly what impact that has.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else for the town administrator, I'll move on to Town Council and see if there's an additional report after the items you've already covered.
Well, what I have to say is really trite compared to everything you've heard tonight, but I may as well.
We appreciate it.
So we talked about the Grove Street pilot agreement. I'm also working on a proposed pilot agreement coming from the Barrett House. We're waiting on on them to supply us with something. And you also heard that about the land donation and the proposed deed from National Grid. I've also reviewed and commented on a proposed change of manager application submitted by the Pine Brook Pub. And I've also received a question and I've met with staff concerning enforcement of the state sanitary and building codes regarding a rental property in town.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Town Council? I'll start within the room. Anyone?
No.
No? No, Joe? Okay, sorry. Rick, do you have any questions for Town Council?
No, I do not.
John?
I'll start.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you very much, Ed, for being here and for the work that you're doing. So we'll go down to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports and I will start in the room and I'll go to Joe.
Okay, we've been not meeting officially, but back and forth, telephone, emails. And being the head of the Adams Suffragette Centennial Celebration fundraising efforts, I've stopped my fundraising efforts along with other members because of this COVID-19. I think people have other things on their mind and we don't want to be asking anyone for anything at this present time. Also, I haven't heard back from Jay, but I sent an email out and, and I wrote to the chairman asking her opinion, as she is the chair, about what we should do for this upcoming celebration. Is it something that's doable? Or is it something that perhaps there should be a postponement to? One of my big concerns is we want to have a good parade. And having sent out a lot of the letters, we're waiting, May 18th is the time when people are supposed to respond. But May 18th, I don't know, people just aren't in a festive mood right now. And I think that we're going to have to have a, as Pam mentioned, a frank discussion with the town administrator and the town selectmen to see what their thoughts are. Because the town selectmen would be the people that would either postpone it, have it go, or whatever they felt necessary. But I really think that we need to have a frank discussion. Perhaps the earlier the better to see what our thoughts are on this. It's a fluid situation, as we all know. But a timeline would be advantageous for our group, I believe. And that's all I have.
Okay. Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say inadvertently, when I was talking about the council and agent yesterday, I forgot to mention Christine and her husband were there. I apologize for that, you know, if you're part of the board here, so.
We don't need any recognition.
But I feel bad.
I was incognito anyway.
The other thing I just want to bring up is the, our Banners for Fallen Heroes program is going strong still. I received another application today. We are up to 33 applications at the present time. We got our first draft of what the banners are going to look like and most Jay and Christine have seen it. And it's really, it's really going to be very nice. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything for Subcommittee and Liaison Reports?
I do not.
Okay. John?
I have nothing.
Okay. I do have one update, and that is in regard to the Police Chief Search Committee. I know there was a question about the work that they will be doing. I did receive a notice yesterday from one of the members that was appointed to the search committee that due to some personal reasons, they do need to step away from the search committee. Dave Bazillion does send his regrets that he's not able to continue to serve on that committee. And we will need to find someone to fill that spot on that that group. So I would just ask that if any board member is aware of somebody from the business community that could round out that search committee to please let myself or Jay know and we can put that on the agenda for hopefully next week so that group can continue to, well, so that they can start reviewing applications once they're whole. So I just wanted to share that. I'll move on to announcements and good of the order. I'll start in the room and I'll start with Joe.
Okay, a few things. It wasn't brought up, but the governor had made an announcement early this afternoon that the schools will be closed through at least May 4th. So parents, it's going to be a tough one. But I think it's a very smart move on the governor's part to keep people away from one another. Also, I'd like to congratulate, this is some good news, the Adams Husick Valley Girls Basketball Team for being crowned co-champions of the State of Massachusetts Division III Girls Basketball Team. Because of the virus, the final game was canceled. Husick Valley beat the Central Massachusetts team, Middlebury, a team that had beaten them earlier in the year. So they revenged that loss and had the tournament continued. They were going to play the team that they beat last year, St. Mary's. St. Mary's again played them this year and St. Mary's won that game. So I know that the girls wanted a chance to revenge that loss against St. Mary's, but it it just didn't happen. But I think congratulate the girls. I wish we could do more for you at this time as we did last year. But just thank you. And I know a lot of people are happy that you did such a great job. And I'm sure everyone in the community is also happy, but they probably haven't expressed it because everybody's minds are on different things. And lastly, I think I'd like to thank all the health care providers in the county, all the people that are on the front line of this COVID virus. They're really the unsung heroes of this. And it's just important to, you know, if you see somebody that's a care provider, thank them for what they're doing because they're basically putting their health on the line every day. And I just hope and pray that they get all of the needed materials to protect themselves and so they can go home to their families feeling confident that they aren't a carrier. And I guess that's all I have.
Joe, since you were talking about education, I did want to mention, I've been really impressed with the Husick Valley Elementary School's social media presence during this week and their, their desire to make things a little bit more normal for all of the elementary school children who are home and by providing their regular announcements. The morning announcements have been playing out on Facebook every morning. I've been listening. I appreciate Principal Sawyer's dedication to to providing those announcements and a little bit of normalcy.
Birthdays and everything like that, yeah.
It's been very sweet. So I think that's wonderful. And as an educator yourself, do you have any tips for any of our parents who are homeschooling their children for the first time?
I think that the parents that I know that I've spoken to said, boy, now I can see why it's hard being a teacher. Because they don't just have their own children. They have 30 kids in a classroom. And it's a tedious job. But, you know, be patient. You're, if you, anything you can do as a parent to help your children, it's going to be an advantage to them in upcoming years. So keep your patience. I know it isn't easy. I've never been married, I don't have children, didn't have any children. I've been at the school long enough to see that it's, it's trying at times.
That's a nice way to put it. Oh, thank you very much, Joe. Jim, do you have anything?
Going back to the homeschooling, I saw, I don't know who the parent was, it don't matter. But the first day of homeschooling, she says there was one suspension and four detentions made it out today.
That's rough.
The only thing I, you know, with the schools extending out, reopening and stuff, and if it keeps going the way it is, I really and truly hope that if it goes to the point where the schools don't open, I hope they have graduation ceremonies for the seniors, class night, and the senior prom. I mean, that was some of the fondest memories of my life, you know, my senior year. I really hate to see them lose that. That's all I have.
Okay. Rick, do you have anything for announcements and good of the order?
I do. See, I can't say more than just not at this time. But I realize it's easy to see the amount of work that town staff, town employees, their flexibility in, in working through this. And then our emergency responders, they all did great. But I also want to pay attention to the the folks that aren't sitting home. People at the grocery stores, stores, the gas stations that are still there, even though they might want to be home. So everybody else can get what they need.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much for that, Rick. John, do you have anything for announcements and good of the order?
My fellow board members have covered everything, so I'm all set.
Okay. I just have a couple of things. And Rick, I'm glad that you mentioned grocery store workers. I've been really impressed with the Adams Hometown Market, their response to get more product in, but also their, their quick response to extend the hours, to open earlier for our first responders, for anybody who's in a vulnerable population. And I've really appreciated the fact that they've done that. I also wanted to mention, we talked a little bit about some of the restaurants in town. And we do have a number of restaurants who have made a quick pivot of their business model and are currently operating as takeout places. So I would encourage people to check and see if your, your favorite restaurant in town is open and order takeout if you can. If they are, if they are doing online gift certificates, I encourage you to purchase a gift certificate, but help our local businesses out as much as possible. And I am aware that there is a GoFundMe account that is out there. It is called North Berkshire Tip Jar. And that money is going toward those who are in the restaurant business to help them through this period of time. So you, if you are inclined to go to the the GoFundMe page, you can actually identify the community that you would like the money to go back to or the particular server or the particular restaurant. So there is a way for you to help some individuals who are in our restaurant businesses here. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize what today is. So today is March 25th, 2020. It marks the one-year anniversary that Jay Green joined us as town administrator. It's been an interesting year, including the last couple of weeks that may have seemed like five years. But I wanted to say happy anniversary to Jay. We're glad that you are here with us. One of the reasons you were hired was for your emergency management background, but we didn't realize it was going to come in handy. we didn't realize it was going to come in handy in your first year. With that, I am also aware that we do need to do a review, so it's all happy, you know, happy anniversary, but there is a business piece of this, there will be a review done. I just need a little bit more time and patience from the board to get that information out to all of you, to collect the information, and we'll probably do that closer to May. And I just wanted you all to be aware that that has not fallen off my radar, it's just the last couple of weeks have sidetracked a lot of that work. We do have an executive session that is on our agenda, and we will go into that. I wanted to note just before we go forward with an executive session, that we do plan to still have a Wednesday, April 1st meeting, trying to keep the agendas to whatever we really have to cover. The logistics of scheduling a meeting in this fashion are not easy, although I think it's going pretty smoothly this evening, so knock on wood. But a lot of that is because we do have support from Northern Berkshire Community Television, and Peter joining us this evening, and Deb handling all of the logistics with the phone and so forth. So we do plan to have a meeting next Wednesday, April 1st, and I will keep you posted as to how people can participate and public comment, et cetera. So if there are no questions or anything more to come before us, I will entertain a motion to go into an executive session, and will point out that we would only be coming out of the executive session to adjourn the meeting. So if somebody would like to make, and it is a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect in the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I have a motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim. This is a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes, and before, I'd like to thank Peter and Deb really for making this meeting so that the people of our town have some enjoyment in their life.
Wow. I'm going to have to make it more exciting next week if that's the case. I have a yes from Joe. Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Christine is a yes, that's unanimous to go into.